Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Appeal Hearing for this Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. It's 3:04 PM. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Rachel Grant is present virtually, and Commissioner Claus is excused for this hearing, not able to be present. Are we live streaming this?
We are. It is live streamed and being recorded.
Okay, so we're live streaming and recording this proceeding, and we're here to take up one matter essentially, the appeal of a hearing examiner's decision regarding the Johnson Creek Quarry Expansion Special Use Permit. It's a quasi judicial hearing, and then we'll have a closed session following the hearing to discuss the matter with legal counsel, and that will be closed to public pursuant to RCW 423140 subsection 2. So just to introduce this proceeding, good afternoon, and I will be presiding as Chair of the Board over today's appeal. It's December 3rd, and again, for the record, it's 3:05 PM. The Thurston County Board of County Commissioners is now on the record in an appeal of the county examiner's decision dated September 26, 2025, filed by Aisha Alexander and other undersigned folks, including Patrick Klein, Tia Gold Branson, Kyle Gold Branson, Roslyn Gold Branson, Mary Gold Branson, Oscar Talamonte, Georgine Talamonte, Derek Johnson, Tracy Johnson, Gordon White, Tracy Markey, Greg Markey, Jamie Dobson, and Chad Dobson. The hearing examiner's decision approved Mountain Stone Aggregate Special Use Permit, subject to conditions. In summary, the appellant raises six issues. Number one, the hearing examiner described the project as limited to 42 acres, but approved a permit covering 228 acres and imposed no restriction, condition restricting operations to the smaller area. Did he err as a matter of law and act arbitrarily by failing to make the 42 acre limitation an enforceable condition of approval? Number two, the board has the discretion to deny the special use permit for policy reasons alone. Should it conclude, this is the appellant's contention, should it conclude that the public interest is better served by maintaining the integrity of the long-term forestry designation rather than enlarging the mine? Number three, the hearing examiner removed several permit conditions that county staff had recommended to protect groundwater and surface water. Did he err as a matter of law and act arbitrarily by substituting his own lay opinion for the county's technical expertise without providing a reasoned explanation? Number four, the county's lead planner testified that the permit should be denied because the applicant never provided the hydro-geologic information needed to evaluate the project. Did the hearing examiner act arbitrarily and err as a matter of law by rejecting that expert judgment and by relying instead on his own opinion? Did the examiner err as a matter of law by allowing the applicant to defer applying for a required forest land conversion permit contrary to Thurston County Code 1725403? And number six, did the examiner act arbitrarily and rely on insubstantial evidence by disregarding conflicting testimony from the county's own experts? In quasi judicial appeals, the board is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine codified in chapter 4236 RCW. Under this doctrine, the board members are not authorized to have ex parte communications with the parties after an appeal has been filed with the board. However, if there have been ex parte communications since the appeal was filed, or communication or relationships with any of the parties that may appear to impact their impartiality, then the substance of that communication or relationship needs to be disclosed. In addition, each board member must be able to impartially judge this case on the facts contained in the record and applicable law. At this time, I will ask each commissioner to make a declaration for the record, and I will start with Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. I would like to disclose that I am familiar with the parties of record filed in attachment D, including Gordon White, Esther Cronenberg, Rhonda Larson-Cramer, Jim Lazar. But since the appeal was filed on October 10th, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties on this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts and the record and applicable law.
Commissioner Fournier.
Since the appeal was filed on October 10th, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable by law.
Okay. I would say that since the appeal was filed on October 10th, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law. I do know the same for individuals that Commissioner Mejia identified Gordon White as a signatory to the appeal, and Esther Cronenberg, Jim Lazar, Rhonda Kramer are named as parties of record in the record that we provided, the written record. But I've not discussed anything about this case with any of the four of them. Commissioner Grant.
Since the appeal was filed on October 10th, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law.
Okay. Do any of the parties have objections or challenges for any board member to decide this case? Looking to the attorneys online.
This is Mr. Teligen for the appellant, so we do not.
And this is Ms. Rogers for the applicant, Mountain Stone Aggregates. We do not have an objection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the ground rules for the hearing is the appellant may present 15 minutes of oral argument. Oral argument may not present new information or evidence, but must be limited to the evidence in the record and the specific issues raised in the appeal. The applicant has 15 minutes to respond. I understand the department will not be presenting oral argument, but is available to answer questions from the board. The board, if it has any questions, will ask them during or after argument. And the clerk is going to try to pull up a timer so that you will have an understanding. The appellant may reserve time for rebuttal within a 15-minute time window, so that would be up to them to manage that. And are there any questions before we begin to the attorneys? Nope? Okay. All right. So our hearing is now open, and we will start with the appellant. You have 15 minutes total time to present your argument.
Very good. Good afternoon, and may it please the board. My name is Brian Teligen. I'm a lawyer in Bremerton, Washington, and I'm here on behalf of the appellant, and I thank you for your time here today. As you noted, we are challenging the hearing examiner's decision approving a special use permit or an SUP for the expansion of the Johnson Creek Mine, and I'd like to focus on three principal points that we raised in our briefing. The first has to do with the ambiguity of what was actually permitted. The permit application in this case was to expand an existing aggregate mine from 10.4 acres to 228 acres in size, and you can see that in the caption of the hearing examiner's decision. Through the course of the proceedings, the applicant, Mountain Stone Aggregate, clarified the proposal is actually twofold. The first part is to expand the quote "active mining area" from 10.4 to 42 acres, and the second part is to extend the quote "mine or site boundary" to 228 acres. Some of the 228 acres outside the active mining area will be used for material stockpiling, but for much of that area, no particular use was identified or discussed. Only that future phases of the active mining area may expand into the remainder of the 228 acre site or mine boundary area. At the hearing, county planning staff recommended an express condition to the special use permit, making clear that if mining expands further into the 228 acre mine or site boundary area, then a new SUP will be required, but the examiner declined to impose such a condition, instead relying on the text of a provision of the Thurston County Code to address that issue, and that is at section 20.54.030 of the Thurston County Code, which provides in part that when a use is authorized by an SUP, then it quote "shall be deemed to be a permitted use on the lot on which it is permitted." And our concern here is that if the quote "mine boundary" is approved for the whole 228 acres, then it is very possible that the county could lose its authority under this provision to curtail future or further mine expansions into that area, which is very concerning in this case to us, given the amount of disagreement in the hearing below between county planning staff and the applicant over potential impacts to water resources, including sensitive salmon habitat. County planning staff raised a number of issues with the applicant's modeling of impacts to ground and surface water resources, and we want to make sure that if the mine owner proposes to expand the mine further in the future, then the county retains full control to both condition and, if necessary, deny such an expansion. And now, the applicant in this case has responded to that issue and stated that if it proposes to expand further in the future, then it will need to apply for a new SUP. But with the new mine boundary now quote "deemed to be a permitted use" under section 20.54.030 of the code, we are concerned about the idea that even if a future SUP application could be used to impose conditions, the county might not actually be allowed or have authority to deny such a project since it is deemed to be permitted. Another ambiguity, I think, that flows out of the mine boundary area relates to the fact that the 228 acre mine boundary appears to straddle lands that are designated as mineral resource lands and lands that do not have that designation. This was addressed in the staff report, page five, and it's important because mining is only allowed on lands that have that designation. On this issue, the applicant has said that it doesn't matter because the Thurston County Code provides that if any portion of a quote "site" has been designated as mineral resource lands, then it may be expanded into non-mineral resource lands, and that's true. But the problem is that we don't know where the mineral resource zone boundary is in relation to the quote "site," and the border may well run through the portions of the larger 228 acre site boundary, and that would then allow the applicant to expand further into non-mineral resource lands by virtue of the mine boundary exceeding the active mining area. Given the ambiguity of what was actually permitted, we would ask for reversal of the examiner's decision, specifically with an instruction that the site, mine, or permit boundary be narrowly drawn around the proposed mining operations, and this should not prejudice the applicant as the existing DNR permit mining boundary is drawn tightly around the existing 10.4 acre active mining area. So to do the same thing here would simply preserve the status quo, and you can see that at attachment N to the staff report, page 11, which shows the existing DNR permit boundary. The second issue I'd like to touch on has to do with the applicant's failure to submit a Forest Practices Act or FPA conversion permit application to be processed at the same time as the special use permit. The Thurston County Code provides that quote "a class four general forest practices application shall be submitted with a development application for the affected site." This means that when an applicant applies for a development permit, they must at the same time apply for a forced conversion permit, and you can find that at section 17.25.400 of the Thurston County Code. And then that code further provides, at section 250, that this requirement applies specifically to special use permits. And this requirement to apply for a conversion permit at the same time as you're applying for your other permits is important for understanding the true scope and impacts of the proposal. In terms of the scope, an application for a conversion permit requires the applicant to submit a site plan showing harvest boundaries, planned improvements such as roads, and a completed application form that shows all areas that will be stumped, graded, filled, excavated, or otherwise disturbed. And this would help the county, for example, understand exactly what the applicant plans to do on the 228 acre mine site outside the area of active mining or material stockpiling. In terms of understanding the proposal's impacts, we would note that the county's SEPA checklist specifically requires, among other things, that the applicants state how much forest land will be converted to other uses. And without this information, we don't know how much land will in fact be converted or exactly what conversion activities will be undertaken. In this case, the examiner held that the applicant need not submit a conversion permit at this time, but can do so later prior to the start of actual mining, and you can find that at condition 34 of his decision. But that cuts against the plain language of the code, which says that an application quote "shall be submitted with a development application for the affected site," meaning the conversion permit application must be filed and processed at the same time as the special use permit. Finally, the code at section 20.54.040 states that all special uses quote "shall meet" all applicable federal, state, and regional, and Thurston County laws or plans. One of those laws is the county's own law that conversion permits must be sought at the same time as the SUP, and so we would request reversal with an instruction that before the SUP can be processed or approved, the applicant must make its application for any related forest conversion activities. Third, third issue has to do with the project's compliance or non-compliance with the purposes underlying the county's long-term forestry or LTF zone. Section 20.54.040 of the Thurston County Code, this is the section that addresses special use permits, provides that all uses authorized as special uses shall meet the following standards, and then one of those standards is that quote "the proposed use shall comply with the general purposes," plural, "and intent of the applicable zoning district regulations and sub-area plans." For the LTF zone, which encompasses the entirety of the 288 acre project site, the purposes of that zone includes three things, or four, but I will list three here that are relevant. The first is maintain and enhance resource-based industries. Number two is conserve forest lands of long-term commercial significance, and number three is discourage incompatible uses. The applicant has stated that the mine meets one of these purposes, which is to maintain and enhance resource-based industries, but it's not shown that it complied with the second two purposes, which are to conserve forest lands of long-term commercial significance and to discourage incompatible uses. We say this in part because without the applicant submitting a conversion permit application in which it would need to disclose all lands that it intends to convert from forestry to another use, there is simply no way of telling if these purposes will be met. And so our final request for relief would be reversal with instructions that not only should the applicant be required to apply for a conversion permit prior to its SUP approval, but that it also be directed to demonstrate compliance with all purposes of the LTF zone, not just one of them. Unless the council has any questions, I would like to save the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
Okay, there's no questions at this juncture. We'll go to, and you have four.
Can I actually ask some questions?
Sure. You'll have 4:40 to for rebuttal, but go ahead, Commissioner Mejia.
So I have two questions. My first question is in the ambiguity of the 42 acres that you stated, and so I'm wondering if the conclusions of law were revised to state that only the 42 acres are authorized for mining and that any additional disturbance requires a new SUP. Would that cure the ambiguity you allege?
It would certainly help. I would note two points, Commissioner Mejia. One is that while there is general reference to 42 acres, I don't believe there's any reference to the exact sort of site plan that was submitted, right? So it could be, I mean, I think you could read it as it is, even if you were to talk about 42 acres as being sort of 42 acres anywhere, so it would be good to have that narrowly tailored to the exact 42 acres shown on the plans that were submitted. But I think the, I think the ambiguity is that what exactly is the, the, the site boundary? What does it authorize? And so my concern there, as I noted, is that the code section that's being relied upon for this, which is Thurston County Code 20.54.030, says that once a use has been authorized through an SUP, it quote "shall be deemed to be a permitted use." And so I do worry that even if a new SUP could be required, right, would the county have the ability in the future to deny, right, given that it shall be a permitted use, or would the county only have the authority to condition? So it would be good to specify those items as well.
Thank you. And I have one more question in regards to the SEPA and the mitigative determination of non-significance that you mentioned. And I'm wondering if you could clarify, you know, your arguments that go to the legality of the SEPA and the mitigative determination of non-significance itself versus which go to whether the SUP satisfies Thurston County Code 20.54.040.
Right, yes. And so the SEPA issues are not before you today. So the resolution of the SEPA appeal is not appealable to the board. And so we simply, so, and this is sort of a mixed issue, which I think would be within your purview because the code does say that the applicant needs to apply for a forced conversion permit together with their other permits, and they're all supposed to be processed together. We simply cited the SEPA checklist to show that that actually has meaning. That requirement has, has meaning because it would provide information that would be relevant, at least under, under the county's environmental review, which is actually one of the provisions in that code section, is that a complete conversion permit must include a SEPA checklist, right? So we aren't, we aren't really challenging what the examiner did with the SEPA appeal. We are saying that this particular non-SEPA requirement, which is to apply for the permit at the same time, that that has real meaning, and as an example of that, it would in fact inform the SEPA process.
I think I'm going to go ahead and ask a couple of questions too, because it might, it might be something that appellate, or sorry, the applicant or your rebuttal want to address. But so in your initial brief, you talked about, you had some, some suggestions for if this were remanded. In the reply, you really were arguing that it should be reversed. And I'm just wondering, most of the arguments you made here today seem to offer a suggestion as to how this could be fixed in a way that would be satisfactory based on your reading of the law. So could, couldn't your goals be, could your goals be, you know, accomplished if the board were to remand with some of the destructions that, you know, you're suggesting versus, or are you, are you continuing to argue, as you did in the reply, that reversal is, is there something that you've argued that demands reversal versus a remand is my question? Hopefully that's clear.
Yeah, I think that's a tough, a tough issue, and it's, it's an issue that we've struggled with. I do think that, for one, I, I think that the word remand might be a bit ambiguous as to whether or not the remand is simply to go back to the examiner or to go back to county staff to have the applicant work some of these issues out. So for example, with the conversion permit issue, I mean, I, I think, I think, well, A, reversal and remand are not mutually exclusive, right? If you were to remand, in any event, the proper action would be to first reverse and so that this decision is no longer effective, and then the decision is where to sort of send it and what to do with it. And there could be a remand to the examiner, there could be a remand to county staff. For example, the, the conversion permit issue, I think the most appropriate way to deal with that would be to remand all the way to county staff because that would require the actual submission of a new permit application that would need to be processed before the SUP went back to the examiner. With the site boundary issue, I don't, I think that's a, that's a tougher call. You know, should that be remanded back simply to the examiner to narrowly tailor the site boundary to the actual operations, or should this be remanded back to staff for the applicant to work those issues out? I don't know if it really makes sense to send this back to sort of a contested proceeding, right? A lot of these things seem to make sense to go back and have the applicant take another run with county staff who seem to be very knowledgeable and very capable in their jobs to work these issues out, and then maybe it can rise back up to the examiner level. Does that help you, or does that make sense?
That helps. Thank you. You, on page 11 of your brief, you talk about Thurston County Code 2410030 J and K, and I'm quoting from your brief, which require the county to determine that a proposal will not cause And I'm quoting from your brief, which require the county to determine that a proposal will not cause groundwater contamination. Or reduce the capacity of any aquifer to absorb water. And then you talk about how county staff had raised questions about whether there was sufficient information to. Determine that, but you didn't highlight that in your argument today. How critical is that? Assuming that that's a missing piece, I take you at your, at the, on the face of your, of your briefing. How critical is that? And, and if, if it's, if it is critical, why was that not one of your points, uh, this, this, this afternoon?
I, it was not one of my points this afternoon because I, 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 I think that it, it, it is difficult for the commissioner to reach down. And say that the exam, to reach into how the examiner, um, balanced the facts. Um, I will say, uh, you know, looking at the record below, um, I, I, I was struck by the fact. Uh, that county staff were not represented by legal counsel and there were a number of areas where. It seemed to me that there could really, there's, there, there really would have been an opportunity to, to provide county staff a final sort of sir. Uh, or, or a redirect opportunity to address some of the questions that were posed by the examiner. And, and I'm not, I'm really not sure that the examiner gave county staff the sort of substantial deference or substantial weight to their opinion. That, uh, he should have given them as the sort of county's experts and as the people who are in charge of reviewing code compliance. Um, but I, I would, I guess, I, 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 I de-emphasize those points because I feel that those are sort of. Um, more important background issues, right? That, that those, those make the other issues loo larger, as it were, right? Fixing the other issues is important because we are, we are against the backdrop where county staff was pretty clear. Um, that they felt that the groundwater and surface water modeling and information and evaluation. Uh, was not adequate imposed real problems for the environment. And to me, what that means is, is it, it may be difficult for the, for the board to reach down and say the examiner. Necessarily got those wrong, but they certainly play into, we, we need to do the rest of it by the book. And we need to be very clear about everything else because those issues are looming in the background and they're very serious.
Thank you, I got one more for you. Um, on page, page nine. You write, uh, special use permits are inherently discretionary. This is lines three through eight. Even if an applicant demonstrates technical compliance with the rules in its permit application, approval is not automatic. But there is an important qualifier to this rule. This discretion lies solely with the board. Hearing examiners and judges cannot decide these broader issues of policy. It is a special power reserved to the board to chart the course for the county's future. You don't cite any authority for that paragraph, and I'm wondering where that authority lies.
Right, yeah, and, and I will tell you, I think that paragraph's wrong. Um, I, I, I don't think that you can just deny it based on policy grounds and that's part of why I've tried to emphasize the particular code compliance issues that I've raised today.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go to our, is any other questions from commissioners before we go to the applicant? Okay, this is Rogers, I think it is. You have fifteen minutes. Let's reset the timer, ma'am clerk.
Great, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Nancy Rogers. I am a land use attorney with Karen Ross and Humbleman and I've represented. Mountain Stone, I go there, uh, on this matter and, and in the hearing in front of the hearing examiner below. Uh, we are here today in support of the hearing examiner's decision and our request to board of county commissioners is that you uphold that decision. And deny the appeal that has been presented to you. I'm going to provide some basic background and then, uh, respond to various arguments that have been raised in the appeal. First, uh, it's important, uh, and the record plainly reflects that a ten-acre mine on this property. Has been in operation for over thirty years. The property is very remote. Uh, and as noted by the hearing examiner and his findings, two point, number two point one. The proposal, or not the proposal now, the approved special use permit. Um, to expand mining, uh, to the forty-two acre operations area as phase one. Is not a radical departure from the current use. Um, as shown in the record. While not a radical departure from the current use that's been ongoing literally for thirty years. What happens with implementation of this new county special use permit? Is that we now will have stormwater controls, modern-day stormwater controls associated with this mine site. We now will have modern-day wetland and stream protections associated with these mining operations. The special use permit, um, was appropriately approved by the hearing examiner based on all of the county standards. And most importantly, all of the evidence in the record. The two hundred and twenty, well, stepping back even further, Warehouser owns. A lot of timberland in this area and a lot of timberland in Thurston County, as you are all well aware. Um, this two hundred and twenty acre, uh, site for the special use permit is all Warehouser land. Uh, the special use permit mapping, there are, there are specific site plans and maps. Uh, there's also an overall map at exhibit fourteen point two that's just an easy way to see how everything lays out. And it is plain and clear where the forty-two acre mining operations area is. For, as it's plainly and clearly described in the application materials, phase one of this mine site. Um, a new special use permit absolutely will be required for any expansion beyond those forty-two acres of operation area. Uh, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about that in a second. Um, but I also want to note that again, this is not a radical departure from the current use and this is not. A mine that involves issues such as washing or asphalt plants. This is simply the mining of rock and trucking of it out. There's crushing, it's screening, mining, crushing, screening, trucking it away. Um, the county hearing examiner conducted, um, really detailed review of all of the materials on the record. And again, in our opinion, probably included that all county standards for approval of the special use permit were met. We know obviously that the appellants are unhappy with that outcome. But as we explained in our briefing, community displeasure is not a legally acceptable basis for the board to overturn the hearing examiner. The board's review is limited to the evidence that was presented to that, to the hearing examiner. Nothing new can be added, uh, and nothing outside the record can be considered. I also want to make the point that the hearing examiner is a professional expert in land use. He's a land use attorney. Um, and he was hired by the county to do exactly what hearing examiner McGinn did here in this circumstance. He presided over an eleven-hour-long hearing and he took ex, uh, an extended period of time. To review the volumes and volumes of paperwork in this record. In order to determine whether or not the county's, county code's special use permit cri, criteria were met. He weighed all the evidence, he wrote an extensive and detailed decision. Uh, and, uh, again, that special use permit. Should have been granted, was granted by him, should be upheld by you because all of the code requirements and some of it's from that. Turning to the more specific issues, uh, in the, raised in the appeal. Uh, number one is the concern or the, the allegation that it's somehow ambiguous. To have a two hundred and twenty-eight acre special use permit when there's only a forty-two acre mining operation site. And the risk that that poses in the appellant's mind that somehow when. The forty-two acre mine site is depleted. There won't be a new special use permit applied for to expand those operations. Um, the hearing examiner agreed with our position that your county code is actually quite clear. Uh, that once a special use has been authorized, like it is here. And I'm reading now from condition twenty-six, which is pulled from your code language. Uh, the use shall not be enlarged, extended, increased in intensity. Or relocated unless an application is made for a new or amended special use authorization. That very plainly and clearly says that we need to have a forty-two acre mining operations area, which is plainly documented in the site plans. That are in the record. Any enlargement, extension, relocation of that forty-two acre mining operation area triggers. A new special use permit application. That said, if the, if the commissioners are, remain concerned about that issue and don't believe that their, your own laws are sufficient to make sure that happens. Then, you know, you could add a sentence to condition twenty-six that says something along the lines of. Specifically, if mining is expanded be, beyond the forty-two acre operations area, then a new special use permit is required. Period. That is a simple solution to resolve what I do not think is an ambiguity, but if you are concerned that it is, there's a simple way. Um, to do that, that does not involve either reversal or remand of the hearing examiner's very carefully decided decision. Um, the, uh. Second issue that, uh, Mr. Teligen raised today is the, um, concern that the. Uh, that there was not a forest conversion permit application submitted. Again, all of this land is owned by Warehouser. As the hearing examiner noted, the evidence in the record is clear that the lands have already been clear-cut. You can see that, um, at the hearing examiner's decision, um, section one point one one on page three. Nonetheless, a conversion permit is required by your code and condition thirty-four mandates that that conversion permit be applied for. Processed and approved prior to any mining operations extending onto the forty-two acre operations area. That is more than sufficient to accommodate and assure and, and confirm that there are no, some, no, no other. Impacts associated with the clearing, uh, that is necessary to mine this property. I also note that the record is clear and the hearing examiner makes this clear that. Post-mining, the reclamation use of these lands is for forestry. Again, this is part of a wide swath of Warehouser-owned timberlands. Uh, there is no long-term conversion of any property out of forestry uses. In addition, as we've covered in our briefing, mining uses are absolutely allowed within the long-term forestry zone. They're absolutely allowed. We are applying for the special use permit that is required. We did apply for the special use permit. The hearing examiner has approved that. That is how your county code is structured and there is simply no issue of incompatibility. Um, uh, discouraging conflicting uses, um, or failing to conserve forest land. We are absolutely maintaining a resource industry by having mining on this site. We are absolutely conserving forest land by having mining here for. In the grand scheme of things, a temporary period of time, after which it will return to forestry. And we are absolutely discouraging conflicting uses by confirming that it is resource uses that continue forward on this property. The, um. So that addresses the alleged ambiguity in the size of the property. Um, there was also a note that Mr. Teligen made that he was concerned about some of the lands perhaps not being mineral resource lands. The hearing examiner and our briefing below, and I believe to you as well. Uh, it plainly explains how your code allows. Mining to occur on lands that are not designated mineral resource lands, so long as they are adjacent to other lands that are designated mineral resource lands. There is no doubt, no question whatsoever that lands within this property are designated for mineral resource lands use. The only question that arose during the hearing below was whether a small sliver of the two hundred and twenty-eight acre land area. Might not be in the mineral lands, mineral resource lands area. But even if it isn't, your code plainly allows mining to occur there in the future. Um, the. Just trying to respond to the other questions raised for, uh, Mr. Intelligent. Um, we really do not think that it is necessary to or appropriate to. Shrink the special use permit boundary from two hundred and twenty-eight acres down to forty-two acres. Forty-two acres is the operations area for the phase one. Any expansion of mining beyond that absolutely requires a special use permit, as I've already covered in detail. We also have soil stockpile uses within that two hundred and twenty-eight acre land area. That are not included in the forty-two acre, uh, mine site. And the special use permit should be approved to include those special, those stockpile units. Special use permit should, boundary should include the potential phase two and phase three lands for, um, potential future mining expansion. Again, a new special use permit, its application itself will be required, but there's no reason to shrink the current boundary. Into a smaller area that fails to include stockpiles and future expansion. Uh, potential, um, the, um. And then a couple of final notes, um. Mr. Teligen said he was struck that the county staff below were not represented by counsel. Um, I've been doing this for over thirty years and it is extremely unusual for county staff to be represented by legal counsel. During the land use hearing, extremely unusual. It does happen, but it is not commonplace, so that was not. That was nothing that struck me as, as odd and, and I don't believe that the hearing examiner thought that that was odd either. And then the final big picture point is about the, the assertion that we continue to hear that county staff said. There wasn't sufficient information, particularly about hydrogeological issues. That is the biggest issue. That's the issue we spent the most time on in this hearing. It's the issue that we submitted the most evidence on and it's the issue that I think the examiner spent the most time responding to. Um, and the, the, the fundamental problem here is that what happened was that one of the county staff members. Simply stopped reviewing in detail the submittals of my client. They just didn't review them. He reviewed them at a very high level and you can see the, the hearing examiner's findings that, um, at that high level. The, um, Mr. Hanson, the hydrogeologist. His initial review concluded that frankly, the materials were within shooting distance and were really close, but he never reviewed the details. And so that's what we asked the hearing examiner to do and that is what the hearing examiner did. And he documents in his decision, point by point by point. Each of the subsections of the Thurston County Code and how the evidence meets that subsection. All of the hydrogeological data that was required by code was provided to the county. The hearing examiner has confirmed that fact for you, the board of county commissioners. And you should uphold this decision. There is simply no legal basis. Uh, on which to remand, reverse, or, uh, reject the hearing examiner's very, very careful review. Uh, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Otherwise, again, we're asking that you reject the appeal that's been filed. Uh, and retain and uphold the hearing examiner's very carefully worded and decided decision. Subject to, I will say, if you want to add one sentence to, to condition twenty-six to specifically state that if mining is expanded beyond that forty-two acre operational boundary. Then a new special use permit is required to further clarify that statement. That's just fine with us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Any questions from Ms. Rogers before we go back to rebuttal? Yeah, I've got one.
Yeah.
Um, I just have one regarding the. You made reference to reclamation plan for forestry. And I'm wondering, how can you describe a little more about how that's accomplished? How does, how does this mining operation, you know, you see, there's no interference, there's a couple assertions in your brief, like there's no interference here with. Forestry as the use long-term and I, I'm, I'm curious about. Learning about reclamation plans in various contexts and I'm curious how your, um. What, what obligations do you have to kind of restore the forestry use?
Okay, um, so, uh, reclamation is first of all governed by state law. And reclamation is governed by the State Department of Natural Resources under state law. Uh, and the county, um, is actually, uh, preempted from getting involved in that. So this is a state law issue, which is. Probably why you don't see it on a regular basis. Um, condition number thirty-two of the hearing examiner's decision. Requires, um, a reclamation plan be obtained from the Washington State, uh, Department of Natural Resources. Reclamation planning with the Russian State Department of Natural Resources. Requires you to designate your post-mining use of land. So in this circumstance, the reclamation post-mining use of the land, especially given the county's long-term forestry zoning. Is going to be forestry. That reclamation plan is governed by, again, the Department of Natural Resources. They are charged with making sure. That as the mine operation proceeds and phases are concluded. Land is reforested so that it can go to that future. Post-reclamation forestry use. Does that respond to your question?
So it's something that's. The details aren't, aren't on paper today. There's something that gets developed later, like in terms of how do you? I don't know what kind of trees can grow on a, you know, a rock pit or a gravel pit, you know, I don't know what kind of, what kind of. What kind of actions need to be done to, or to restore it to a forestry use from the state that it's in at the end of mining operations?
Oh, I understand your question. Okay, so when you mine, you actually remove any topsoil? Okay, so first of all, this land was forested and it's now been harvested. Okay, so first of all, this land was forested and it's now been harvested. Um, it, it, you remove, the first step of of mine, any kind of mining operation is to remove the topsoil? Cause that's not the valuable resource that you're getting at. You want the bedrock in this particular circumstance. That's what our client, my client is mining is the bedrock. So you remove that topsoil. Um, when you then are done taking the rock out of the site, and by the way, you were also designed, gosh, I'm sorry. Now I'm excited, I'm talking about mining, how it all works. Um, so then you, when you, when you actually come in and mine the land, you design your mine plan so, so, so that you have future topography that's gonna work for a forestry um uh uh use and, you know, so that you could get harvest roads in, in order to harvest trees in the future kind of thing. So the mine plan is designed with that in mind. You pull the topsoil off, you stockpile that away, you mine the rock down to the what am I trying to say, elevations um that are designed in the mine plan. And then when it's time to reclaim each portion of the mined out site, you bring the topsoil back, potentially add topsoil to it if needed, and then you're planting trees and it's back to the normal routine of forest harvesting on the western side of the um Cascade Mountains.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, I want to um ask you in regards uh to the forty two acres versus the two hundred and twenty eight acres. Um, and so first I'm gonna ask if, you know, can you identify where, like in the examiner's decision, um, the scope of authorized active mining is clearly limited to the forty two acres? And how that limitation is enforceable, especially under condition twenty six of the hearings examiner order and Thurston County Code twenty point five four point oh three oh?
Um, sure. The uh proposal is plainly defined as um expanding the area of active mining from ten point four acres to forty two acres. That's examiner's finding one point one zero, one point ten. The that is echoed as well in in finding one point one one or one point eleven. Um, the um skimming through here, sorry. Um. The exhibits include a, the mining site plan. Um, am I going to be able to find that quickly? Ah, the site plans are attachment F. So exhibit F, uh, and that shows the boundary of the forty two acre mine site. So it's in the approved exhibits for the site plan. Um, the conditions, coming back to them. Um, I believe approved that site plan, let me see. Um.
So while you look for that, can I, you know? So do you believe, like in your view, that the decision authorized a special use over the entire two hundred and twenty eight acre permit boundary? Uh, with operations initially just confined to the forty two acres? Or does it authorize only forty two acres of disturbance?
It authorizes forty two acres of mining disturbance, but there is the additional area of the soil stockpile. I don't have the specific acreage number for you on that soil stockpile. Um, and I don't, I don't have the ability to put on screen the, the, the map right now. But if you were to look at exhibit fourteen point two, I think that's the easiest one to understand. You can see the forty two acre mine site. You can see the soil stockpile. You can see the two hundred and twenty eight acre boundary around those two things. And then you can see the overall parcel boundaries that are, you know, I think twelve hundred acres. Um, but yes, coming back to the fundamental question, yes, mining operations are limited to that forty two acres. That's the only land that can be disturbed for mining purposes is that forty two acres under the terms of this special use permit. Uh, you know, and and Thurston County also to to help put your minds at ease, you, you do have a periodic review process as well that every mine site has to go through. Uh, and that's every, I believe, every five years uh required under your code, which means you're gonna be checking in every five years on the status of these mining operations and confirming that the mining operations are within that forty two acre window.
Anything else? Okay, if there's no other questions, we can go to rebuttal for the appellant. I think it's four minutes and thirty six seconds. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, to pick up on the issue of the site or mine boundary, uh, Ms. Rogers called your attention to uh finding her paragraph one point ten of the examiner's uh decision uh as as a place where he specified uh this was, that this was just about the forty two acres. And I'm gonna read from that uh paragraph right now. He says, uh, the proposal seeks to, one, expand the mine boundary from ten point four acres to two hundred and twenty eight acres and two, expand the area of active mining from ten point four acres to forty two acres. So it is a two-part proposal. That's what the examiner said. One, expand the mine boundary to two hundred and twenty eight acres. Part two, expand active mining to forty two acres. And I guess the question that we have is why? Why, why is the applicant so interested in not shrinking that area? And getting that area at two hundred and twenty eight acres? Now, if you look at exhibit fourteen point two, which is another exhibit that Ms. Rogers called to your attention. This is sort of an overall plan map of they submitted to the county. I, 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 I do wish I could show it. It's, it's interesting because um it shows the forty two acres. Uh, it shows the stockpiling area. Um, and then it shows the two hundred and twenty eight acres. And the two hundred and twenty eight acres are not simply drawn around the forty two acres in the stockpiling area. It's a lot bigger, it's a lot bigger. Um, it also has an interesting annotation, cause the, the two hundred and twenty eight acres is outlined in red. That's what they're proposing, but it actually has another potential boundary called former proposed boundary. And it's different, it's, it's much, it's much, it's different shape. It extends to the north uh and not so far to the south. Uh, it also was around those features, but it's, it's very different. So there was, there was deliberation uh that went into this proposal to get to the twenty hundred, two hundred and twenty eight acres. And why is that? Our concern is that, okay, even the forty two acres can't be expanded. The examiner approves something in that two hundred and twenty eight acres. And our concern is that um even if in the future S U P is, is required, it won't be able to be denied because there's gonna be thirty years from now, fifty years from now, a hearing examiner decision or approval that says that's the mine boundary. That's our concern. Um, regarding the conversion permit, um, conversion permit is required. If you look at finding two point two point two of the examiner's uh ruling, he says, um, uh, a development permit resulting in the removal of timber must be approved for a forest land conversion permit. This includes land disturbing activities. According to the staff, this is required. And this is the applicant agreed, this permit was required. This permit was required. Uh, he writes, the applicant agreed this permit was required. Um, so they do need a conversion permit because they're converting it to a non-forestry use. Uh, Ms. Rogers noted that the, the area has been actively mined uh or actively uh deforested already. That is true. The examiner found the forty two acre area has been clear cut. Uh, there is no finding about the rest of the two hundred and twenty eight acre area. And that's what we're concerned about. What activities are gonna be happening in the rest of the two hundred and twenty eight acres that we're not being told about? And so a conversion permit would actually enable you to find that out, to find out what else is planned in the two hundred and twenty eight acre area. Let's see here. Oh, um, I, I wanna talk, uh, so this idea, I mean, the, the idea that um county planning staff just stopped reviewing the applicant's, I mean, all that's false. Um, what the app, what, what, what was testified by Kevin Hanson at the hearing was that he stopped reviewing the applicant's submittal of data. And the reason why he did that is because he said he, 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 he thought that the modeling work was wrong. It was based on wrong assumptions about the soil type, about future storm events, uh, about what the proper baseline was. He, he, he looked at it cursorily because the data didn't matter, uh, because their modeling was wrong. So we would ask you to reverse this and remain that uh for the reasons we have spoken about today. Uh, and I will end there unless you have any further questions.
Commissioner.
Yeah, um, I would like to um follow up with you kind of on the long-term forestry on your um. You argued that, you know, expanding the mining over the long-term forestry designated parcels is inconsistent with preserving working forest lands. And so given that, like Thurston County Code twenty point zero eight D and twenty point five four expressly allow mineral extraction as a special use in the long-term forestry zone. What specific code language do you contend the hearings examiner misapplied?
Right, yes, so, so it is true that in the long-term forestry zone, uh mineral resource extraction is a conditional use. Um, as I, as I mentioned, I may not have mentioned uh the actual, what, the code, the code section, but if, I, I believe it's um uh, section twenty dot fifty four dot zero four zero uh of the Thurston, of the Thurston County Code says, all uses authorized as special uses shall meet the following standards. And then goes on to specify that the proposed use shall comply with the general purposes, again, plural, right, of the underlying zone. And then if you go look at the underlying purposes of the, of the uh, 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 of the long-term forestry zone, it includes conservation of forest lands of long terms, commercial significance and discouraging incompatible uses. Now, obviously, there has been a decision made in the Thurston County Code that mineral resource extractions, uh, those sorts of uses can be compatible. My argument to you today is you really can't make that determination until you know exactly what trees they're gonna be cutting down, what forest practices they're going to be engaged in. And to know that, to know that, they have to apply for a forest conversion permit, which they're supposed to do before they get their S U P permit. Right, so while in theory, you can always have these uses in this area, you are supposed to look at all of these purposes, including conservation of forest lands. And to figure that out, you need to have the forest conversion permits that you actually understand what forest practices they propose to engage in, which is something they agreed. Again, the examiner said, the applicant agreed that this permit was required.
I have another one for Ms. Rogers, if you know, if I could flip back. Um, I am confused about the the two hundred and twenty eight acre as a mine, like so under, like looking at one, one dot ten that you pointed out and the two-part proposal, spining, spanning the mine boundary to two hundred and twenty acres and then expand the active mining from ten point four to forty two. Now, I understand what you said about, okay, if I'm actively mining forty two acres, I might need some extra space for stockpiling soil or what, whatnot, but you wouldn't need a hundred and, you know, ninety acres of that. And so what is, and if you need a special use permit anyway, what would be the, what does mine boundary mean? And why, why was there the proposal to to expand that boundary to two twenty eight? What is the significance or purpose of that?
So, uh, turning again to exhibit fourteen point two, I'm not sure if you guys have that in front of you, but if you have a chance to look at it, um, you will see again the red boundary that shows the two hundred and twenty eight uh acre area. Um, that does include the existing ten acre mine, the new forty two acre mine limits. Um, uh, and a lengthy proposed soil storage area that comes over from uh and extends from the mine over to the east. And then south of that, it includes a number of, excuse me, I'm gonna sneeze, uh, a number of uh sensitive areas. There are wetlands and streams that we are monitoring and want to protect. There are groundwater monitoring wells throughout the site. Some are, I admit, outside the boundary, the two hundred and twenty eight acre boundary, but most are within that two hundred and twenty eight acre boundary. From an operational perspective, it, I, and I, let me just say, I completely understand why people are confused about this. Okay, I get it, I understand. But from an operational perspective, maintaining that two hundred and twenty eight acre boundary is helpful to the applicant and to the county because it provides that uh boundary for permit record purposes for the forty two acre active mining, for the soil stockpiles, for ongoing monitoring of those groundwater monitoring wells, and for protection of those most adjacent sensitive areas. I, I don't know how else to say it other than to say that. It really is helpful, I think, to the long-term operation and maintenance of this site to have all of that land area included within the same special use permanent boundary, even though it is also very, very clear under your code that any expansion of the forty two acre mine, active mining operation area is going to require a new special use permit uh application. And one other point I wanted to make um is that this figure, at figure fourteen point two, does indeed show a former proposed boundary for the special use permit. That is only there to be clear and, and, and correlate to the extensive noise analysis and study that was conducted using that former proposed boundary, which went further to the north. That's the only reason that's there. There's no, nothing nefarious going on here, there's nothing mysterious. The only reason that's there was to be clear to the examiner about where the noise study actually applied.
Thank you. Any other questions for commissioners, from, from commissioners to the parties? Okay, I really thank you guys for your presentations and we will now uh issue a written decision on or before December ninth, twenty twenty five. So that concludes this hearing. And at this point, the board, in order to meet that deadline, is going to go into closed session and present to R C W forty two thirty one forty two, which relates to that portion of a meeting and of a quasi-judicial body, which relates to a quasi-judicial matter between named parties. And this is the uh the matter before us, um, that we will take approximately thirty minutes and that'll be extended if necessary. Um, so it's four oh seven, we will be in a closed session until four thirty seven. We'd ask folks to
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.